The Lowell Planning Board meeting for Monday, April 4th, 2011. Tonight, we have one public hearing and some new businesses requesting a lot release. Right to get involved in that, we do have minutes for our approval. The first set of minutes for the board's consideration for approval would be the minutes from the February 24th, 2011 meeting. Any of the board members have any corrections or comment on those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of, at the first page, and I noticed it may have been for a couple of the minutes, where it says Mayor's Reception Room up top, just below the, so obviously, I know we met, I believe, in sometime in February, had him in the first meeting, but.
Oh, yeah.
Changed that. And then, on the, I guess, the, under, so I had a question under the New Business Site Plan Review, 1100 Gorham Street.
What page is that, Chairman?
Well, there's no page number on what I.
We're at the top left of page number.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
My paperclip is, page seven.
Okay.
The second to last paragraph, it just, I don't know if it's my, if it's just like a hanging thought, Mr. Lighty suggested having an administrative in three, I guess administrative review, was it, administrative review, in three to six months.
Okay.
So I guess we'd add review in there.
Okay.
So that's all I had for these minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Any of the board members have any other matters?
No.
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve with those corrections, just being the location, I know, must have stood on the letterhead from last time we met down the hall, so just take it off if you could just put down. So that and that review, so we have a motion for approval on those matters?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion is made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, those minutes have been accepted. The next matter will be the March 7th one, and with the correction for the location. Does anybody have any comment on that meeting and those minutes as proposed?
Mr. Chairman, I just, on page five, just before the last paragraph, it, that just needs to be deleted, the motion to continue passed unanimously. That was, obviously, I don't think belongs there. It was a motion to approve, and then, under that, under Bran Street, then we continued that, which is noted at the end of the discussion, right, I believe. Correct.
Any comments on the board members on that amendment? Or any other additional changes?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve of the.
Yes, amended.
April 4th, minutes as amended.
March 7th, you mean, am I right?
Oh, I'm sorry, March 7th, yeah.
No problem.
As amended.
Motion's made, and.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, any opposition? Those minutes have been approved. Moving along, we do have a public hearing tonight. This public hearing is for a zoning amendment, and this is for a map change petition process. And, excuse me, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, Lowell Planning Board will hear a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290, zoning by inserting a new process for petitions to amend the zoning map. That includes a requirement to notify abutting property owners of the request. Just for the packet, we did receive a letter from Adam Backey, Assistant City Manager and DPD Director, to Mr. Bernie Lynch, indicating, City Manager, indicating what the variable request would be. It was, this came out of a, the City Council meeting, and it was by Councilman Mendonka to notify abutters of zoning change public hearings. And it was drafted up, it had been referred to the city law department, the law department did write up the ordinance. The ordinance is basically a two-page matter, since it's short in length, I'll just go on and read what the orders would say. The ordinance to be amended by inserting, at the end of Section 1.7, goes on to read that petitioners to amend the zoning ordinance should be submitted with the city clerk to initiate the process. Petitioners seeking to amend the city Lowell zoning map in a manner with changes in the zoning designation of one or more individual parcels should be required to submit certified a butters list as a certifier to the city Lowell Board of Assessors for all properties within 300 feet of the parcels proposed for the rezoning. The standard statutory radius, which is for the permits hearings that we have now in the city, along with their petition to the clerk before we place on the council agenda. The petitioners shall be responsible to pay for the postage prepared for, for the notices by the planning board, and they come before the city council. Petitioners shall send the notices at their own expense via certified mail and receive returned to the city of Lowell. Petitioners shall notify all butters at least 14 days prior to each public hearing before the city council and the planning board. DPD will draft the notices indicating the time, place, and of the planning board meeting and to provide the petitioner for distribution. The officer of the city clerk will draft the notice indicating the time and place for the city council public hearing, provide the petitioner for distribution. Petitioners shall sign the statement and submit it to both DPD and the clerk affirm that they have distributed the notice to all parties on the butters list. All additional costs associated with preparation and distribution of a butters notices will be responsible to petitioners. Where the petitioner is a public entity, notification procedures may be satisfied by other means by the city council. In the event that is determined that a hearing on the matter, that the petitioner either failed to distribute the notice or failed to timely distribute the notice, such petition may be deemed invalid by the Lowell City Council. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage in accordance with Section 7.1 of the zoning ordinance, and Chapters 43 and 48 of the General Laws, Massachusetts. So this came up as a recommendation from the city council. Therefore, the city council sends it to us for a public hearing. After the vote by the planning board, it will be sent back to the council for a final public hearing. So basically, it came up that anybody who comes in, and as we know, as board members, when they come in to us for a recommendation on a zoning change, they do not have to notify a butters, and at this point in time, it would notify a butters. And before I turn it over to the public, let's ask it, on behalf of Division of Planning and Development, anything you want to add, since it's signed off by Adam, I know that you must have had some input or at least discussed it with people in DPD?
Yeah, I could, I could just say that this is very similar process to the notification for public hearings related to site plan review or, or special permits. So it's just setting up a similar process of a notification where there's a map change or a zone, a petition to rezone a parcel on a map or, or multiple parcels, so the area of butters within 300 feet are notified and are aware of that request.
Okay. Hearing that, I'll turn it over to the public now for the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of the zoning amendment? In favor, in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., wish to be recorded in favor of this. This makes sense. I mean, we have seen instances where people have not gone to the butters, and, you know, they have not hired attorneys, so they don't know the process. This makes everyone have a level playing field. And also, a lot of the butters will be members of the various neighborhood groups, and if they're not, it gets them to become part of it, because they're part of that process. And it, and it helps a lot. I urge that this board unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the zone amendment? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. At this point in time, any board members have any questions, concerns, or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, and just a quick comment, but, Aaron, just on one, one section of this ordinance, 1.7.1J, it says where the petitioner is a public entity, such notification procedures may be satisfied by other means acceptable to the city council. I just was at a loss in my own mind as to what would be, you know, where would that apply?
Yeah, sure. It leaves open some flexibility for the case where the city of Lowell is actually looking at rezoning some parcels of land. It would be most likely a case where it's a larger area. Earlier on in the ordinance, it says one or more parcels, it doesn't really define kind of a line where it requires a butter for notification, where it does not. So if there's a case where there's a fairly sizable geographic area that's going under a rezone in order to address a recommendation or an objective that's laid out in a master plan or a neighborhood plan, it, it may not make sense to send a butter notification to everybody. You could get to a situation where you could, there could be hundreds, if not thousands, if it's a large enough area of butters, particularly if we're requiring, the ordinance requires that the butter notice be sent certified. So if it's, if it's the city of Lowell, one possible solution would be to not require certification, because we can, we can show that, yes, we have sent out the letters. We require certification of petitioners or applicants to site plan review, that it be certified so that we can show very quickly and prove that, that the notification has been sent. But if we've done it, we know it's been done. If it's a large area.
I'm sorry, Aaron, so it wouldn't preclude you from sending notifications, but you just, you would feel comfortable knowing that the city then, in fact, did send the notifications?
No, no, that's, that's just an example.
Okay.
That's an example where there might be some flexibility for the city to not have to actually, you know, it's $5 a certified letter, to lower the cost of, of sending notification, if it's, if it's a city-initiated petition. But there might be a case where it's a geographic area that's so large, it's not necessarily done to initiate or allow a development project. It's, it's a rezone on, on the map to meet an objective of the master plan or, again, neighborhood. So in that, notification may not be deemed necessary. So most, most of the time when you get a rezone, it's a property owner or developer who's looking to actually allow a development project. So it, it precludes an actual physical project, something that's likely to happen in the near future. If there's a large enough rezone, I guess what I'm getting at is it's, it's a slightly different scenario where the city's looking at a larger neighborhood, say a business district, it's changing something on, on the map, but it's not precluding an actual physical project. It may, eventually, but we don't expect that to happen because of this rezone, so it may not be deemed necessary by the city council to send out the notices in that situation.
Is that be something like the Hamilton Canal District, when you rezone that whole area down?
Sure, yeah, the Hamilton Canal District.
And everybody just advertise it?
Right. Another one that I can think of out of the, actually, the Potteckville Neighborhood Master Plan is the suburban waterfront zoning district, which would be a rezone of a, you know, basically the entire SMU district over there, and that would be a, a large mailing, incredibly large mailing, that, that the city council, I think, reasonably could consider not to be necessary to, to send a notice to every single a butter.
Okay.
That there may be other methods for getting the word out to people.
Right, using the neighborhood group.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we, we use the, well, we communicate with the neighborhood groups now, with, anytime we have a rezone petition.
Yep.
Or amendment, even a, a regular amendment that doesn't have anything to do with the map itself, per se. So we try to communicate through those avenues already. It just, with a rezone that's a very specific parcel or a couple of parcels, we want to make sure the people that are directly abutting that, that rezone request know what's going on. Because, again, typically, when there's that specific of a rezone, there's a project that's going to follow, a physical project, a specific, physical project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Goldman that it's a, it makes sense, it's something that we've had petitioners come before us, and we would ask if the butters have been notified in the past, and certainly has an effect on, on the surrounding area, and I think it's, it's actually hard to believe that it wasn't a requirement, and is not a requirement as we speak, so I think that this is obviously a step in the right direction, so, yeah, thank you.
Any other board members, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I agree, it's hard to believe that this has never been a requirement before, because a rezone can, can have a bigger impact on the, on the property or the butters than can a development on the property at times, right? If we were changing a residential lot to a commercial lot, that can have a big impact on, on the butters, so it's important, I think, that we, that we enact this, and this is, this is a great idea. And this clause that Mr. Frichet brought up, this doesn't, doesn't take the onus off the city to, to make some type of notification, it just provides, provides an option for how the notification gets made, and, and that, that option would have to be approved by the city council on larger projects like the ones you mentioned.
That, that's absolutely right, yeah. I mean, the intent of the, of the amendment is to, is to provide more open and accessible information on rezone. So that, that stays the same whether it's the, the city requesting a rezone or a private property owner. Just, it, just the nature of, of the petitions that would come out of the city, it's more likely that it's going to be a larger geographic area, and you don't want to kind of require ourselves to send out a huge mailing, but there are many other options that we could pursue, and, and, right, it's the Lowell, it's the city council that would decide what is appropriate in that case.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Clamont?
I'm sorry, just a couple of comments on it. I do think it's a great idea to have the notification, and just for the sake of discussion, I think the fact that if it were a larger parcel, we don't want to necessarily have the city involved in certified mail to hundreds of butters, but I think that that's probably covered in 1.7.1B, where it's changing the zoning designation of one or more individual parcels, so it appears to me it's, it's geared towards a smaller parcel of property, one or two individual parcels and not a large tract of land, number one. Number two, back to J, this is where the petitioner is a public entity, and we're, we're talking now about the city of Lowell, is, is that defined elsewhere as any other types of public entities, UMass Lowell, anything like that, or?
It is not, no. It is not, not in this ordinance amendment, no.
Or anywhere in the zoning code? As a public entity, is that defined anywhere?
No, no. I can look just to be sure, but I don't, I don't know if it.
I'm just wondering if that would be better served, saying when the petitioner is the city of Lowell, instead of saying a public entity.
Yeah, it's not defined anywhere else. So the only other entities that I can think that would request such a zone change, well, maybe, maybe NemCOG, but I don't see any reason why they would even do that. A state transportation organization wouldn't have any, as far as I know, any, any reason to, to request it, so it might be just as simple to change it to the city of Lowell.
Yeah, I just, I agree with the inclusion of this on the zoning ordinance, I think it's an important part of it, and I'm totally in favor of it.
You know, the comment I have to follow up on, I mean, so I mean, I imagine if it was the city of Lowell, they'd probably just do advertisement in the paper, and they'd do other matters, instead of getting out whichever they'd be quiet, then at least there'd be public notice by advertisement in the local paper, and stuff in that nature, instead of doing all the, like you said, the certified mails that they're coming back. Besides that, I, I think it's a, it's a good zoning ordinance, that, I think it's always helpful to get the neighborhoods' input, because a lot of times, the people who are fixed, fixed the most have the, most have come down to speak and have a lot of things to say, that a lot of times, people who are changing things, that we get some good input from the neighbors, the neighborhood association, it's always helpful as a, as a board member to hear the input of the local people to find out what's going on in the area, so I'm definitely in favor of that ordinance, so. Having said that, much to pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to recommend approval to the city council with the, the, the one change that Mr. Clamont had suggested, was where we do not define public entity in the zoning code, is to actually substitute that with the city of Lowell.
I'll second the motion. That was J, right? Yeah.
Yeah. I think, just a comment on that, I think we can recommend it, but I don't think we can change it.
No, recommend the change.
Recommend the change.
Yeah, just recommend.
Recommend the change, recommend the change.
We could say, you know, we're in favor with this recommendation.
We're recommending that, that change.
That's the council, but, I know in the past, they've told us, we have to vote either you have to know, but sometimes we say, we're in favor with the consideration of, you know, recommendation that you might look at this.
Sure.
If you want to rephrase that, if that's acceptable to all, to board members, if you're second.
Sure.
Sure, yep.
Okay, so I got a motion.
As amended.
Motion is made, and second, as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, any opposition? Hearing none, recommendation is to go along with the zone change. Aaron, just curious, for any people who are watching this evening, do we know when this matter is going back before the council, has it been posted yet, or is it soon to be announced?
I actually don't know if it's been posted yet. Usually, we do try to do them concurrently so that we can move it over quickly, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you, okay. Moving along, the next matter we have is for a lot release, this is Tiffany, excuse me, Tiffany Drive. The board will review a request to issue a certificate of performance of the releases of three residential lots, lots 2, 3, and 7, from the conditional approval contract between the city of Lowell and Thomas F. Dougherty dated back on April 10th, 1973, in relation to a subdivision plan for Tiffany Drive that was approved also in 1973. Here's Aaron, that, you gave us an update tonight by the city engineer who went out and inspected the property, and I believe that, I had a conversation with you early in the day, that you inspected the property as well, could you give us some input to the board, if you would, please?
Yeah, I should say, when it was an inspection, it was more of me just driving and taking a look at the, the street. I think I mentioned earlier, too, that this subdivision was approved in '72 or '73, which is, I believe, older than our current subdivision standards, so if I was able to pull out the measuring tape, I don't think I would have anything to compare it to. But it, you know, basically, what's happened here is there are five of the seven lots were never released from the covenant when the subdivision was approved. Two of them were, I think it's lots 2 and, excuse me, lots 4 and 6. So my understanding of the situation is that one of the property owners was looking to have a refinance completed for their home, and it came up in the title research. So it's a matter of just clearing the title. My brief conversation with the city engineer is that it's, it's such an old subdivision, and it's really not a whole lot for us to, to hold up on this project anymore, and the other point that the city engineer made is that it's probably in that time been repaved, so it's been pretty much treated as a, as a public way.
Does anybody here want to speak on this proposal that's here before us this evening? I know the only person in attendance for the record is Mr. Goldman, so, but I, we do have a copy of the recording that would inform the certificate of performance back, it looks like in 1975, where they do release lots 4 and 6. That was signed by Don Samoski, who was our secretary in the planning board and was also our associate planner when I first came on, but I was on the board in '75, so I can tell you that, so, but Don was our secretary when I did come on the board, so.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'll be recusing myself on the deliberation and vote on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, as well, I will be recusing myself as well on this matter.
And, so we did get a, because Aaron gave us a email that came in from our city engineer, that they have no fears, that they have no problems with releasing the lot. The staff is going, as indicated, we can find no reason to hold back on the loss of releases, which came in, we received this evening. It was done over 40 years ago, the pavement is in that place, may or should have been, we've done since then, so. Having said that, which is the request of the board?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for a lot release at Tiffany Drive.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, any opposition? Hearing none, so we have three in favor, none against, and two abstain. Moving along, notices from Bunningtown. Any comments on that? Have been hearing none, we'll move along to the zoning ZBA notifications. We do have one matter before us tonight for the ZBA notifications, and this is for a special permit for James Tavarez, property is located at 1703 Middlesex Street, and this, the petition is to extend an existing non-conforming use warehouse to another non-conforming use manufacturing, assembly, reconditioning pursuant to Section 4.5.2 of the zoning code. We do have the information in our packet. I had a couple of questions on reading this, and I did speak with Aaron about it earlier today when we were going over what was on tonight's agenda. Now, could you explain to the board, how you explained to me what the, how, I mean, I looked at the plans, and it would be nice if we had somebody here to actually spell out what it's going to be, but as you indicate, it's going to stay in the same property that's there now. And could you explain also how you talked about the mixed uses on that site, which you explained to me earlier in the day, if you would, please?
Sure, so this is a, the project of 1703 Middlesex Street is a existing warehouse. It's a part, a part of what was formerly two warehouses that were connected, one of them is currently a temple. This other half, which is the subject property in this case, a property owner in the city of Lowell, he's a business owner, was looking to move a business to this site, and it's a computer LCD TV screen repair kind of business. And so the, the closest kind of use type that is in our zoning code is, can be defined as a light industrial, because there is some level of fabrication involved, you know, he's taking components out of the, out of the computer, components out of the LCD screen to repair. It's not allowed by right or with a special permit in the suburban mixed-use zoning district, but because the warehouse that is currently there is an existing non-conforming use, what the gentleman's requesting is a special permit to extend an existing non-conforming use to allow, extend it from the warehouse to the, what is a, a kind of fabrication, light industrial fabrication kind of use. My understanding of it is he's looking to take up, you know, between 40 and 60 percent of the, of the property, and then he'll end up, I suspect, leasing out the rest of it for a similar kind of use. And that, that all the work is going to be conducted on the inside of the building, he's not proposing as if he had any work on the outside.
I mean, I know, when I read it, it seems complicated, and I wish there was somebody here to explain it more in detail. And then I sat down, I said, you know, basically what they're doing there? And that's what Aaron explained to me, how he spoke with the applicant, and I figured if he could just address what he told me earlier, to give the board members some information on it, but, the only thing I had was what was in the narrative, so I don't know if any board members have any questions, I don't see anybody here on the matter.
I have a comment on this. I, I went out to the site and looked, and, you know, my concern would be, if you're going from a warehousing operation, where you're inventorying things and, you know, moving things in and out, you're going to have a certain level of people working there. If you change the use and you go to either an assembly of fabrication or any type of semi-manufacturing operation, the tendency would be to increase the parking requirement around the building. And also, there was a comment on the documentation that most of the traffic, truck traffic in and out of the facility would be, in the future, smaller trucks, vans and things, but 5% of the truck traffic would be large 10-wheeler-type rigs. After looking at the property, there are several things, there's plenty of parking, so if the business grew and employment grew, there wouldn't be a parking issue. Secondly, they have loading docks on the end of the building that are, that are well-equipped to handle any kind of a large truck traffic, there's plenty of turnaround radius, and, you know, they're equipped for that type of operation. And thirdly, the building presently is unoccupied, it's a little rundown out there, so, you know, I would be in favor of this, as, as presented, I think it would be a good thing, particularly if you're going to create a few more jobs. That's all I have.
Like I said, on the now, did they say, you know, hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday night to 2:30. Employees are dismissed on a staggering basis from 3:00 PM to 5:00. Then it goes on, all material deliveries are done during these times, and 90% of our deliveries are pickups, UPS and FedEx, and the 5% would be deliveries or pickup by truck to trailer, common carrier, averaging once daily.
I don't think there'd be a huge difference. I don't think there'd be a huge difference between a warehouse operation, what they're proposing really.
Do the board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this site is, like a lot of things that come before us for a zoning board recommendation, we kind of have incomplete information because the applicant's not here. We don't really understand exactly what's going on, so it's hard for us to make a definitive recommendation on a lot of these things, but we have to deal with the information we have. One thing about this site that concerns me, this abuts Edwards Field, right?
Correct. So there's the subject parcel in between Edwards Field and 1703 is the temple.
Is the temple, right, okay.
So this was the area that was going to be the billy of Apollo?
Yeah, right.
Right?
That's correct.
And that could overturn in the-
Used to be Goodwill, I think, right?
I think at one time it was Goodwill. Gone through a number of-
Yeah.
Okay, I remember when it was Goodwill, yeah.
So the, a lot of times, you know, Edwards Field, thank God we have it because, you know, it's a great asset to the community. Soccer games go on there all weekend long. The problem with Edwards Field is there's no parking. People are parked all over the streets and a lot of time they use this parking lot for, whether they should be or not, a lot of people will use this parking lot on Saturdays and Sundays when they go in there. I've always thought maybe the city should look into working something out with the owners of that property to make it, you know, work out some type of arrangement to allow people to use the parking lot. And I just wondered if this might be a kind of an opportunity to sit down with the owners and say, hey, can we work something out? Can we allocate some of the spaces for Edward Street parking on Saturdays and Sundays in return for sort of extending this use? Because on its face, as Mr. Lockhart says, seems like a fine, fine thing to do. It's a warehouse, yeah, we're extending the use to manufacturing, but it sounds like it's going to be relatively light manufacturing. It seems like an appropriate building for something like that. Certainly the parking is there, the only, this is the only thought I had when it comes to things in and around Edwards Field, is there something we can do to accommodate that?
I think it's a good idea because there's plenty, there's plenty of space.
It's certainly within purview of the discussion, particularly under a special permit kind of review to have that conversation with the petitioner. And I'm certainly not in a position to speak for him, but when I've had a conversation with the petitioner, he seems open to working with the city and the temple. He's already had a meeting or a conversation with folks from the temple about what he plans on doing and that sort of thing. The one, the one thing I would say about parking and providing parking to Edwards Field is that the fact that the temple is actually the closer property and actually is the closer parking area. And I, from, you know, the limited dealings that I've had with this project and past projects, is that the temple has a fairly sizable parking crunch and they are, they tend to be using the building at the same time. There might be an activity going on in Edwards, it's kind of that off time. Not to say that it's not a potential benefit of the special permit, it just, I would, I would recommend or argue that it probably should be a conversation that's had with the temple, with the proponent and maybe the Parks Department and other properties in the area. Because if the petitioner was to agree to that, which he very, again, he very well may be open to that idea, whoever's parking there is one going to walk, you know, across the temple's property. And then the other, the other issue is enforcing that they're actually parking in the space that's being provided by the gentleman who's applying for the special permit at 1703 rather than parking at the temple site who may need it for whatever reason. It's just, it's just a challenge, but it's something that may be part of a larger conversation.
Yeah, so maybe we can have the conversation. It'd be good if the city could have the conversation. Maybe, you know, right now, it's kind of a free-for-all. People just go and park and hope for the best, you know, I'm only going to be here for an hour for a game, I'll just get out of here. Maybe if there were designated spaces, people wouldn't mind walking. It's not that far.
Right.
People wouldn't mind walking a little bit so that they can get to the field and have some place to park.
Talking more weekend stuff or two.
It's mostly all weekend.
Especially some of the parents who have more than one child playing when they're there from one just to one game.
Right.
You have a 10 o'clock one, then you have your other child who plays at 12.
Right.
And then when they have the weekend tournaments, if you lose one, you come back and play the other one, the other one in the afternoon, where somebody's like, I'm going to park over there, take the kids, honey, you come pick up the other ones, go back. So one else who's going to be there for a little more period of time would be more willing to park over to the side and out of the way a little bit. If it does fill up there, like I say, and traffic is coming and going. Any other discussion on the matter? Any other comment?
Joe, you have any questions, comments?
No, just, I mean, it seems, you know, off the top of my head is a fairly benign, you know, modification of this property from one non-conforming use to another. It looks like they are going to maintain some warehouse storage there and use a portion of it for assembly or manufacturing. They did do a pretty extensive parking analysis on their plan in which they showed the potential building spaces if it was built out for business or professional offices, manufacturing, commercial storage, et cetera, all the way down. If you follow the analysis all the way through, it looks like the maximum number of parking spaces they would need would be 60 and they have 85, including five handicaps. So they do have plenty of parking, but I think it's an excellent idea to, you know, open up the conversation with them and see if there's any opportunity, especially on the weekends, to utilize that parking area for Edwards Field, so I'd certainly support that.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Not, want to make, any want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this matter to the zoning board and also further recommend that the city open up a discussion with the applicant to see if arrangement can be worked out to provide some parking for Edwards Field on the weekends.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That concludes the zoning board of appeals, public matters before us. Just basically why we're on the zoning board of appeals, I think with their, they also having the elections for their new officers and I see that before the council that their, the chairman there, Mr. Steven Geary, is going to be stepping down, want to give him up. Would have thanks for all his dedication over the years to the city of Lowell as a zoning board of appeals member and also with the chairman. I know Steve did a great job and he's going to be duly missed by the people here in the city of Lowell, so I want to put out a thanks to Steve for all his great work over the years. Moving along, I think we have any further general correspondence? I'll start with the planning and development. Aaron, any correspondence for the boards?
I think the board may be aware of it, but the next meeting is public caring for a cell tower facility at 363 Boston and then also the Walgreens public caring, that's for the 21st.
Yeah, that's on Thursday night, because we have the Monday holiday, right?
Right.
That's the Thursday night meeting, because we have the Monday-
That's correct, yep. And then Joe's reminding me that a site plan review application came in for 600 Roger Street, which is a Taco Bell, and that will be the following meeting, so that's the first meeting in May. Speaking of rezones.
Aaron, the legal notice of that cell tower was on the paper tonight. That's 150 foot, I just wanted clarification on what it said. It said it was 150 feet tall with nine antennas on it in a traditional single-family zone off of Boston Street.
I don't know if it's nine antennas, that there's space, they're proposing, I think it's 150 feet tall, I'm not exactly sure on the height, I don't recall, but they're proposing it to have their own antenna on the top and then space for three colocation, which is kind of the requirement whenever there's a new facility going, we want them to provide space for colocation if other carriers want to carry it on that cell tower. It's actually, the site is, it's right south of the Edson Cemetery, I believe it's Edson Cemetery, right by the softball fields off of-
Off Plain Street.
So it's kind of back behind the ball field.
All right.
Yeah. So there, I believe, I believe we have the site plan and the application up online if you want to take a look at that right now.
Any other board members have any comments? Any other boards, committees? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, we adjourn. Thank you, good night, everyone.